Good afternoon and welcome to City Council's Committee on Hearings. We have a meeting agenda for an interview. Madam Clerk, will you read the purpose?
Bill 23, Resolution Appointing Krisha Kubiak as City Solicitor.
Thank you, and welcome to the table. And I think you have a lot of friends who are around the table who know you and may not have a lot of questions, but I would like to give you an opportunity to discuss anything to open up with any opening statements.
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Cale Smith and all the members of council. I just want to say that I'm deeply proud and honored to be nominated as the city solicitor. I think public service is an honor and I am grateful that I will get the opportunity to serve the city. And I hope, please feel free to ask me any questions. I will say that I think some of the things that I bring to this position is an ability to manage people, to drive a mission-driven office, and to give sound legal advice where we try to get to yes and partner with both the council, the mayor's office, and all the departments of the city. But please feel free to ask me any questions.
Thank you. Did you want to talk at all about your qualifications or the resume you have worked on?
I would.
I just want to give you a chance to say anything you want.
Sure, I've had experience in many different areas of law, state and federal litigation, employment law, state and federal regulatory experience, and also administrative law, and also extensive corporate law experience. I also have experience that is relevant right now in a lot of infrastructure work. So the legal side of infrastructure work, both in the building of it, the maintaining of it, and the litigation side. So I think that will be an important piece for the city to take on in the next four years.
Thank you so much for your comments. I'm going to open it up to members now. And I know this is intimidating, just relax. We are all here to try to do whatever we can for the best, the betterment of the city.
Madam President.
It's hard to do an interview while on TV. I thank you for your patience with us. We're going to begin with Councilman Lavelle.
Madam President, may I also chime in when my time comes? Thank you.
Yes, I'll call you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, and thank you for being here with us today. You mentioned a background in infrastructure law, which I think is timely, obviously. A question, though, however, how does that tie into municipal law? Because you don't have experience in municipal law. So I just would like to hear you talk a little bit more about how that ties into municipal law and then the plan on being able to get caught up on municipal law.
Sure. Let me give a little background for the people who might not be aware. There are four practice groups in the Law Department of the City of Pittsburgh. There is employment and labor, there is state litigation, and there is federal litigation. And then there's the municipal law practice group. So it is a third of the legal department of their practice groups. You're correct, but the municipal law doesn't just cover what we would say strictly municipal, i.e. legislation in front of city council or interpretation of the Home Rule Charter. It also includes things like the right-to-know laws, but also contracts. I mean, a significant portion of the work that they do is contractual work, either with the DPW, with public service, with parks, with the CBD. I'm getting that wrong, but yeah. All of those contracts flow through the municipal group. And I have experience with all of the contractual work. So when I look at municipal group, well, let me say this also. I did manage a government affairs team and a legislative team. So I have been involved in the drafting of legislation and on the government affairs side of that for a number of years as well. So we do have a lot of experience on that. But if you would permit me, I just want to say this. What I have in the last week and a half, I've met with the majority of the attorneys in the law group. And I will say you have a committed group of highly skilled attorneys who have years of experience, and they are very impressive. I will say some of them do legal work, that there is not a private attorney in town that has those types of skills. And I want to give a little shout out to that municipal group because they don't get much recognition. But specifically, Lorraine Mackler, Matt Stidl, Jack Miller, Anthony Ballon, Ben Smith, Sarah Steers, Celia Les, Kristin Erickson, and Jesse Exelis are excellent attorneys who have a lot of experience. I will tell you, I believe the group intelligence is the best intelligence, right? We are all smarter together than we are alone. And I certainly will rely on them for their expertise. But I think what I bring to the position is the ability to manage across departments. What I see occasionally, people get siloed even within the legal department, so they only look at their little slice of it. And because of my position that I've had previously, I can see multiple legal issues. And so we make sure we're checking all of the boxes whenever an issue arises.
Appreciate that. Who do you believe is your client?
So by the Home Rule Charter, my clients are the mayor, the city of Pittsburgh, and the council.
Thank you. I think it's important to acknowledge that, so thank you.
Very much so.
What do you view as your duty and loyalties towards council?
I believe I serve them all equally, and I hope that no conflicts arise. I say that so that we drive towards one decision for all of them. If conflicts do arise, we need to address the conflicts. I do think we can do that by cordoning off different parts of the legal department or with your work with your new council solicitor.
And since you started it, but since you mentioned it, in my time here, there have always inherently been conflicts. Conflicts between council and authorities, conflicts between the administration and council. Can you talk a little bit more about your plan to address the conflicts from the administration and council when they do arise?
It is very important, and it's always something that's been very well done, I think, in the legal department. One of the things I'm proud of the legal profession for handling is the ability to be able to recognize conflicts and to be able to address those conflicts up top. So once they are identified, and I will say that if they are identified by any of our clients, right? If they are identified by you, by the mayor, or by people who work for the city, if those conflicts are arisen, then we need to have a process whereby we go through the conflicts, determine who will take care of it, and divide up the work so that people can work in a way that is free from conflicts. As a city solicitor, I also oversee the ethics hearing board and the employees that are charged with that too. So we take ethics extremely seriously in the Law Department.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Ms. Kubiak, how are you?
I'm good. Good to see you.
Good. I apologize for not being in there in person today because this is such an important interview, and I would like very much to have been with you. And it bothers me that I can't see you because I need, I'd love to make, there you are. I can see you now. I feel better about this. So first, having read your resume, I wanted to thank you for your service to Pittsburgh Action Against Rape and your board service for two years. It's an incredibly important, incredibly important organization here in Pittsburgh. It does reside in the Third Council District. And I'm intimately aware of the work, the very difficult, difficult work that they do. And I just want to thank you for having served in that capacity.
Thank you, Councilman. I certainly want to thank you for your support as well. I was well aware of it while I was on the board. And I'm still very much track that organization and very proud of the work that they do for the city.
Yeah, good. Thank you so much. So let's, if I may, I'd like to just begin about talking about the timeliness of our actions or reactions. I remember when I came into the council, this is my 15th year here. Doug Shields was then the president of city council. And I remember him giving me this piece of advice, and I never forgot it. He said, "You're going to find that your days are like channel surfing, that you will get two or three seconds to consider something before something else comes at your way that needs your attention." And so what I took away from that was always understanding and employing that I may plan my day, but my day will ultimately plan me. And we learned that firsthand Friday. I'm sure Mary Gany and Jake and we, all of us and the people using the bridge, did not realize we were going to wake up and deal with infrastructure catastrophe. And so I just use that as an example of what I have learned. The Law Department is forced, for lack of a better word, to deal with on a daily basis, that we never know when the next crisis may occur or the next thing that requires our attention is going to be put into our day. And so I'd like, I would like you to perhaps maybe talk just a little bit about thinking on your feet, for lack of a better way or maybe a poor way to put that, but sort of understanding that there will be a lot that is required of us, and much of it will be required in a very limited amount of time that we'll have to be equipped to deal with. And so I'd just kind of like to hear a little bit of what your thoughts are on the matter.
That's a really good point, Councilman Kraus. I will say, I said a couple of times over the weekend, because most of my weekend was spent busy on city events, is that decisions that I would normally take three weeks on were being made in 15 minutes. And it's certainly for a lawyer, you know, not the most comfortable place to be, but the reality is we were in an emergency that needed fast-moving decisions. And that part you have to be comfortable with in this position, without a doubt. I will also say, as we were working through another issue today, I know people wanted the decision in 15 minutes. But what I tried to do at that point is make clear the amount of time it will take and the reasons why it will take a certain amount of time. So instead of 15 minutes, we might ask for 24 hours or 48 hours. But we will tell you what the pieces are of that decision that have to be made, the things that have to be clicked off. And hopefully also, in my time in the private sector, you know, we talk about critical path items often, right? So we're trying to make sure that everybody's working as much as possible so we can get to that and working at the same time so that we can get to that final decision as quickly as possible. So I certainly, in my prior positions, customer service has always been a priority for me. And I will take that into this department as well. We are hoped to be here to serve both our external clients, which are the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, and our internal clients, which are the employees of the city of Pittsburgh and of council and of the mayor's office. And both of, that is a high priority for us. So please, if ever you are concerned about our customer service, I hope you address it directly to me because that will be a high priority for us.
Yeah, I want to reiterate your remarks or maybe echo your remarks about the quality of person that we have in our law department. And they don't get the kind of credit or kudos that they deserve. It is largely thankless. I am certain that many could find much higher salary ranges if they were not employed by the city. But they do choose to do it out of a love for the city and a love for public service. And I appreciate that you were willing to recognize the quality of personage we have there. I would throw one more in there, and that would be Wendy Kobe. I've enjoyed a wonderful relationship with her over the years. Certainly our former solicitors, Yvonne and under her leadership. I don't think we can say it enough, the kinds of sacrifices that people make to take positions within municipal government and municipal law. And it's really important to recognize their service, and I appreciate that you did. I'd like to sort of move on to your position as Director of External Affairs, largely, and please correct me if I am wrong, but largely dealing in sort of a government relations kind of position is dealing with the politic, if you will, of the situation. And there will be times you will be called on to separate the politic of the situation to the legality of the situation. And my hope for you is that always, always, we will, regardless of whether the city council, regardless of whether it is the mayor's office, that our law department will remain completely independent at all times and demand independency at all times and always act with the law in mind and not the politic in mind. Would you like to perhaps go into that a little bit?
I would. Let me first clarify. My Director of External Affairs position, I managed the government affairs team. So I had a group of lobbyists that reported to me. But I also managed the Regulatory Affairs, which is the rule makings and brief writing that we did at the Public Utility Commission in addition to what we call New Development Connections, which was external economic development. So, and they were making sure that Duquesne Light was serving customers, large customers, and getting them online as quickly as possible, right? Working with their large construction projects. So although I did have government affairs, that was not my whole job. But I do say specifically, this is not a government affairs position. This is a legal permission position, first and foremost. And my advice to you, to the mayor, and to city employees will always take law, will always be driven by the legality of it.
I appreciate that. And I didn't expect any different answer from you. I just thought it was important to put it out there, and I appreciate your frankness. Could I go into a little bit of what Councilman Lavelle brought up in terms of municipal government experience? And you spoke about the four different types of law that we deal with in the, forgive me, in the Law Department, one of them being contract. A lot of time, and I know a lot of frustration with the former mayor's office, with city council at times, was really around the details of contract law and how long things lived in the Law Department before they were able to be delivered back to either city council or to the mayor's office. And just was interested a little bit about your thoughts about the incredible detail around contract law and what your thoughts and experience are around that and what you might bring to the position regarding it.
Yeah, we had similar issues in prior positions that I've had. And I think, what I will say is what we intend to bring to is, one, clarity of communication. So if the person who wants to have a contract reviewed by the legal department, if they aren't clear on what the legal department needs in order to review that contract, it can cause undue delays. So we want to make sure that we build clear communication that we will need the insurance certificate, the price, the terms, the key terms and conditions, the key to indemnity agreement, those kind of things that will be needed upfront in order to review the contract. And then we will set a clear amount of time that the law department will have to review the contract. Certainly, some contracts, much easier to review, standard definitions, things that don't have a lot of changes. And then there's other contracts with brand-new provisions in them that we have never seen before. We're not sure of what the legal implications are. So therefore, we need more time to research and make sure we get to the right place. Once we do that, we then also need to set out times that we expect responses from our clients, right? So because a lot of times, if you, if the question is, are you willing to concede on this point or this point? It is a decision made by the business partner. It's not a decision made by the law department. And so, but I think the key to that is building clear timelines and good communication in order to make sure that the contracts move expeditiously through the department. We were working on one today again. And I will say, you know, we are trying to get it done as quickly as possible, but we also need to make sure we make the right legal decisions. And we do not sacrifice sound legal decisions in order for expediency. Because sometimes, I think, people think we just read them and sign off. We do not just rubber stamp them. We do have to do a review of the provisions to make sure that they are in the city's best interest.
Yeah, I appreciate your response. It was exactly what I was hoping to hear. We all wish for expediency, especially in a digital age where, you know, everybody thinks just because I emailed you, something is automatically resolved and why isn't finished in 10 minutes? And so I really appreciate a careful and cautious and diligent approach to contract law. We are, you know, we are entering into contract. And to know that front and center, we are interested in protecting our clients, which is the constituency of the city of Pittsburgh, could have great impact on them financially if we were not to do so. So I do, I appreciate your response to that. Can we talk a little bit about employment? You are going to be the legal counsel, I guess, for lack of a better word, for about 33, 3,400 employees. That's an awesome responsibility to take, all the contracts around police, fire, EMS, all of our union workers. So just perhaps a little bit of insight as to your experience and your approach around the complexities of employment law?
Really good point, Councilman Kraus. I just want to echo you, which is, we're very lucky to have Wendy Kobe as the Associate Solicitor for the Labor and Employment Group. She has years of experience in those areas, which are really helpful. I certainly have experience both in litigating and reviewing labor and employment issues in the private sector, but also familiar with the union rules that will, that also govern. And that's, we want to make sure that we are constantly abiding by the collective bargaining agreements, that we are paying attention to the civil service rules. And we are working hand in glove with the HR department. Certainly, the Human Resources Department is the one who administers most of the stuff. But we are responsible for the negotiation of contracts. And we, at this point, are down two attorneys in the Labor and Employment Group. So we are hoping to be able to fill those positions. Once I am approved by council, then I will be able to hire for those positions. And we want to make sure we have a full staff to get ready for a very busy labor and employment time.
I hope I'm not breaking confidence here. I'm going to share this delicately because it was set in confidence. But I remember, you know, when we run for public office, we all go out there and we say things like, "You wait till I get there, and I know what needs to be done, and we're going to do this and this and this." And then when we arrive, we understand the limitations under which we operate and the powers that we have and the powers that we don't have, and, you know, where to find our balance to, you know, sort of accomplish the goals that we have set for ourselves when we get here. So after Mayor Paducah was elected, and he was in office maybe two months or so, we had lunch. And I said to him, I said, "Mayor, I'm just curious. What did, you know, now that, even though you've been on the floor for as long a time as what you've been, now that you're over in the mayor's office, up to this point, you only imagined what it was like to be there. But now that you are there, what is different from what you expected?" And I'll never forget his response. He said to me, "I am awash in matters of personnel, that they consume every minute of every day." And when you, when you employ, when we employ 3,400, 3,500 employees, that's a lot of matters of personnel. And again, I hearken back to our ability to be flexible and fluid and to be able to respond to things sort of at a moment's notice because we never quite, you know, understand what the day might bring to us. But a lot of it, I suspect, unless you can correct me, there will be a lot of time, of your time consumed around matters of employment and labor. Is that, is that a correct assumption?
It certainly keeps the four attorneys that are there busy. Human Resources Department does do the bulk of it. So I do want to give a shout out to them because they deal every single day with personnel issues.
Yeah, people. You know, we all, we're in these jobs because of, I hope, because of our love of people and, you know, and our desire to serve. And, you know, we're dealing with people. There were two other areas of law, forgive me, I did not write them down beyond employment, labor, and contract. Could you refresh my memory, please?
I handled state and legal, state and federal regulatory work as well, and administrative and corporate law.
Okay. And so that would come in handy, I imagine, in terms of your ability to assist in bringing additional dollars into the city that are not, that are outside of our tax base, if you will, that would come in terms of negotiations with federal government, community development, block grant monies, state dollars that might be available to us as well as grants and understanding sort of the complexities of grants, how to make certain that all of that is crafted appropriately, and to be able to bring those additional dollars in. Do you see you having a role in that?
I think we will definitely have a role in that, specifically with Fern Hollow Bridge and the reconstruction of that. I think it will be highly relevant. It's also about compliance issues as well and making sure that we're compliant with federal regulations with respect to those dollars.
Yeah, managing expectations. You know, we get a lot of that, that people believe that we have, sometimes, people believe we have powers that we don't have. And one of the more difficult things to tell people is that we don't have the power to do what they're asking us to do.
I agree.
Anything else that you would like to offer up in terms of your past experience that might help to edify the council?
No, thank you very much, though, for the opportunity.
Okay, I appreciate your time being here. Madam Chair, I may have some more questions. I apologize for taking the amount of time I did. I may have more questions after other members have had an opportunity to speak. But Ms. Kubiak, it's a pleasure having you here, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Councilman Burgess, we'll just go down around. Does that sound good?
I'll be brief.
Then it makes dead blast.
I always say that, and I'm not, I'm a preacher, so, you know, I always say that I don't preach long. I've never preached longer than an hour and a half in my life, so, you know. Old preacher joke. E. Gandy is the first African-American mayor of the city of Pittsburgh. And I think having even the events that have happened recently have shown us how difficult a task that must be. I have said that in my, from my biblical perspective, that there are times God sends messengers, angels, prophets, people of light, symbols of His presence, and that perhaps its ascendance to mayor can act as that light of hope to people that everything is possible. One of the things I've been, sort of, Councilman Lavelle and I, both formally and informally, have kind of pondered about is, you know, what does that mean for me, being the, you know, the longest-serving African-American member of council? How, what's that mean to me? What's my place in all this? And I think, as I've thought more about it, especially recently, I think one of the roles I should play is to be a cheerleader. And I've not always been a cheerleader, right? In times past, I have been many things. And in previous confirmations.
Let me fill in the blanks.
In previous confirmations, I have been aggressive in examining candidates' credentials and qualifications and experiences. And in, prior to being announced, I had already set up a template of what I would demand in a solicitor. But in retrospect, I don't think that's right. I don't think that's my role anymore, at least not in this process. I think my role is to be a cheerleader. And so I will, for the most part, without much criticism, and I say criticism, not negative, as you know, criticism can be both positive, negative, but without any sort of evaluation, rather, other than, you know, of course, being, you know, qualified by credential, that I would support his nominations. And I intend to do that, right? And so. And so I will not ask questions, really. You have, I will vote for you and support your nomination. I think our mayor has the honor and the capacity to choose his own staff, and I will support that. I will certainly only suggest a couple of things to you, perhaps. And one is that counsel has decided to to act as a body in very different ways than in years past, right? We are trying to, as much as we can, support our president as she leads counsel. And so that when you talk to her, although a member of counsel, in most ways, she will be speaking for all of us. And that we also hope that our solicitor and you will have a sort of open door policy. Certainly, you're busier than him, you know, you you have all these lawyers that you have to attend to and he has us screaming at him. But but we 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 hope that that relationship would actually be fruitful for both of you and that it would take off some of the things that you need your lawyers to do because some of the things that we asked are very specific in terms of research that for legislation that may or may not ever be written, right? And so we kind of need a a hands on and 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 grateful to have that. And so you have my support and my vote. I will support you during your term as counsel as solicitor, as I have Yvonne Hilton, as I have Lord Az, as I have George Spector. I have been, I have maybe been on the minority of counsel. I have taken the position. I have never criticized the Law Department nor their decisions. Even if I did not agree with them, I have never criticized them because I think someone has to be the referee. Or someone has to say yes or no, and I'm that's not me. And so I am, I am looking forward to working with you. I I do work a lot with the solicitor and the Law Department and its members. I have liked to think I have fairly good relationships with them. I I respect their capacity, as you said before, I respect their capacity. I'm looking forward to you as being new and seeing what new ideas from the corporate sector, right, that you bring in from your your wealth of experience and how that's different. I'm looking forward to that that interaction. And so I I I I'm grateful for your willingness to serve and take the pay cut to come be with us. And we are, we are excited by what we may be able to do together. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Oh, thank you, Madam President, and thank you for coming today. I won't ask, I won't repeat any questions that were already asked of some were some of mine that I have jotted down in my brain prior to coming here. But thank you for those answers. So being here for a couple of years already, I've seen a couple of things, especially in the exec session where, you know, the Law Department is briefing us on what the settlement is and how we arrived at that settlement and, you know, all the causes that brought us to that. So I'll just give one small example, which are city steps that are in need of repair. That's just like a very small part of everything that needs repaired in the city of Pittsburgh. You know, and based on some, you know, some settlements that have occurred just in regards to just a small, you know, item of city steps, you know, not a road or a bridge or in an intersection or, you know, something, a tunnel, and then it's much larger. It's, you know, there's a person that's injured and then there's also the taxpayers are paying, you know, out money that I think could have been prevented. And I'm looking at that thinking, well, who after this meeting is gonna call DPW and say, we need to barricade and identify, you know, barricade and also state clearly to the public that you can't access these steps. If you do, it's at your own risk. So I'm just curious on what your plan, like, how will you plan to communicate with departments, all departments on, you know, basically your analysis on how we can improve improve outcomes with possible dangerous situations that eventually end up being just taxpayer dollars?
I think that's a really good point, and I certainly don't want to speak to any specific case. But I think it is something I've done in the past, which is during the course of litigation or a regulatory body examination, you discover kind of inherent problems and you need to take the time to go back and correct the issue, the underlying issue with that is within the company and that would be within the city. I think sometimes I have heard from the lawyers that things can get siloed at times, right? So it's just it kind of lives within the Law Department, but doesn't really echo outside of the Law Department. And I think that could be a very important plan that I would like to do is a sense of cooperation with the other departments. I think even on the issue of, say, getting away from litigation, but to things like affordable housing, there are things that the Law Department works on with blighted properties, et cetera, that really we could be working on a much broader vision and seeing if we can tackle affordable housing while also addressing some of the legal issues that we're coming up to, right? So I am hoping for a more cross collaborative team that we can work on within the city. And I am certainly willing to work with any department in the city on whatever issue they're having, where we become a part of the of the solution, but not necessarily just solely in our legal capacity, but also based on the knowledge that we have really engendered, you know, that we have gained by the fact that we've gone through these cases and being able to share that knowledge with other departments in the.
Well, thanks. Well, since you brought it up, what can you kind of dig a little deeper on what you're talking about with affordable housing?
So currently, we with the bladed properties, right? We, the city owns a certain number of properties that may not be being maintained at that degree. We need to make a decision on what to do with those bladed properties, right? And either we need to maintain them or we need to turn them back into either onto the tax rolls or explore different ways that we could potentially take those properties and working potentially with the U R A or with other economic development agencies, try and get them into the hands of residents who need affordable housing as well. So I think there's a lot of solutions that are out there. And again, I don't think there's one size fits all solution, right? So I think there's going to be a little bit, there there's going to be different things as we examine. But I think we, the lawyers within the Law Department, hold a lot of information that could be shared within the departments to really make positive change within the city.
Well, I'm interested in working with you on that, especially the model that we create around where we stand on on conservatorship with individuals that file conservatorship with the city. So just let you get your thoughts on that, you know, at some point, once you get more settled in.
Right.
Because, you know, the city, you know, there is multiple properties where maybe it is the best decision that, you know, we work with the person that is trying to acquire that through conservatorship. Maybe it's not.
No, I agree. And again, I don't think there's a one easy answer. One easy answer is probably the wrong one. But at the same time, I think a plan of of tackling these issues and doing it in a larger strategic scope, I think, would be the best thing for the city and the residents here. Really want to work towards having neighborhoods where people can stay in their neighborhoods, but still be proud and feel safe and valued within those.
Well, it's good to hear you explain that, you know. And then as time goes on, it seems like it's more and more of a balance since we used to have seven hundred thousand residents. And so we have to somehow increase population to, you know, maintain everything that we have and also be mindful of everyone. The only other question I had was, how do you see our solicitor working with your Law Department?
Oh, so.
How do you see us working together?
Very excited. I've already gotten a chance to meet your solicitor and we've had a great conversation that I think was a good chance for us to kind of set it. I am, again, I look, I believe in group intelligence, so another voice at the table. Certainly, your solicitor knows a lot of the lawyers in our Law Department since he was formerly of our office. So I think, I think we, I hope that we have a very cooperative relationship all the way through. And I look forward to the additional voice and opinion in the room.
Well, thank you and, you know, thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman and Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Kubiak, thank you for being here today. We've known each other for a few years now and since I started with then Councilman Dan Gilman's office. And I really appreciated the the couple of times you've brought up group intelligence and, you know, how you'll be able to lean on those who have significant municipal and other experience in the Law Department. Because I agree, they're a fantastic, fantastic, very talented group of people. And it gives me hope, I guess, not not even hope, that might be too strong a word, just I feel very confident in your ability to lead that group because of what I saw with your Government Affairs team at Duquesne Light. And it was just a fantastic team to work with. Every single person was on the ball all the time and it spoke, I think, to your leadership of that team. And so I understand that you're inheriting a team here. You're not necessarily shaping it or molding it in the same way. But to the extent that you will be, you know, who they look to for guidance and for leadership and possibly even some light, you know, restructuring that, you know, that gives me a lot of confidence in your abilities there. Since you've also mentioned silos, you gave one example of the Law Department somewhat being siloed from other departments within the city. I wonder if you're seeing silos within the Law Department and whether you think there's opportunities to allow for each and every attorney to 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 be working on, to be their fullest professional selves and to be able to work on all the issues and on all the different parts of city law that they could be, given their interests and their skills. And I know that it's lower paid than other professional, legal professions. And so if you've seen opportunities there to be able to, like I said, restructuring might be too strong a word, but make some changes so that everyone is really feeling feeling fulfilled and that as you're recruiting and finding more people for the department that they're, you know, that they're staying and that there's really low turnover.
That's a great, I, yeah, I always, I'm a big believer in the people first approach to it. And I will tell you, again, we, as we said, we have a really strong group, but I do feel like sometimes they feel constrained by kind of the limits of their individual position. I hope that we have more development pieces. So that's certainly something that I had. One thing that I'll be instituting, I'm, again, I'm in the process of meeting it with everyone on the first time within the department. I'll be instituting regular meetings with the entire group, with the lawyers specifically and with each of the practice groups so that we make sure we can address all of their issues. But I also look towards a time where we work on development plans. So if people are working on a certain type of contract in a certain group, but they have other interests and could it be litigation interest? Could it be labor and employment interest? They have a chance to get some of that work, some of that exposure and see if that's something that they are more interested in. I also see sometimes that we get too caught up in reviewing something from this frame of mind, but not realizing that there's labor issues or that there's litigation issues. And so we need to make sure, and that's part of my job, is to make sure everyone's looking more broadly, but also to get them to talk to each other a little bit more, to send things around a little bit more and make sure that we're communicating on a bigger group. I really appreciate you bringing that up, Councilwoman, because it's been my, you know, but I have a very limited knowledge. And if you've, you're seeing that as well, then that probably points to the fact that this is a ripe area that I want to address. I think working, I'll just, we have a couple of open positions, so I'm going to plug this. I think working for the city of Pittsburgh is a fascinating place to work because of the level of work that you do. We use so little outside counsel that there's real responsibility on relatively young lawyers who are doing excellent work with John Dougherty, Mike Kennedy, Wendy Kobe as associate solicitors who are there as resources, you know, people who have years and years of experience that are there as resources for these young attorneys. So I think it's a very exciting place to work. And certainly with some of the goals of Mayor Ganey's administration, I think we really have a time where we're going to be working on extremely exciting legal issues. And so I welcome anybody to come work with us and I want to make it a place where you're fulfilled, where you feel like you're working for a mission, where you feel like you're making real change. And and the fact is, you're working for the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, you know? You're not working to put money in somebody else's pocket. You're working really to help all of the residents in the best way that you can. And so I find that really fulfilling. That's part of the reason I'm excited to be here. We also have that this building is an amazing place to work as well. So I just a shout out to, you'll have a super cool office too. And so I just hope that people come and do kind of the exciting things that we're going to be doing for the next four years.
Yeah, absolutely agree. And I promise I didn't plan that. That wasn't a planned plug, but I know I appreciate and agree with everything you say. And I hope that we can find even more people to support the work that you're doing. All the other questions I had were already asked and answered, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilmen.
Remember my name?
It's been a long day.
Welcome, Ms. Kubiak. My first pressing question is, how do I pronounce your first name?
Trisha. It's a good Polish name, but it's like Trisha.
It's very pretty, either way, it's very nice. So, so, yeah, I I want to tell you, I was, I didn't vote for having to interview all the mayor's appointees. I feel the mayor's hair, it's his right, you know. But at the same time, I do appreciate just to get to know you a little bit better and just to talk, I think is a good idea. So you'll have my full support. You had it probably before you sat down here. But again, the opportunity just to get to know you a little bit better is good. So so just going back to Mr. Friedson real quickly, okay? I'm really happy and I think this will take a load off of your department in ways where we're calling you over things that are easy and quick. However, I do find conflict with a new attorney in the way of, I'll just give you an example. I'm looking to him for advice and I've got other members looking to him for advice, but we're on different sides of the ball, okay? So he is now representing us both and at the same time being pulled in two different directions. And it's come up in two different subjects already. So my question to you is, when that happens, okay? Whoever's working with Mr. Friedson first stays with Mr. Friedson. But I would like to be able to call on, you know, your office and you give me an attorney to talk to. So we're not, you know, he's, again, we, everybody tries to paint the picture, the legal picture for our attorney as to why it should happen. So he's got me telling one thing and somebody else on another and, you know, going back and forth. So so I just want to make sure that, you know, you're open to that and.
Well, the Law Department will always remain open to the council. Certainly, I'll talk to Mr. Friedson if we ever end.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I've discussed it with him and he sees, you know, again, I didn't anticipate that when we hired him. And he's been very helpful in so many other things. It's only come up, you know, once or twice. So I just want to note that, I guess, more than anything. How many attorneys are you at right now? How many are on staff?
We have, let me see, I think we have nineteen.
Oh, wow.
We have two open positions at this point.
Oh, so you're gonna have twenty one. Wow, that's, that's great. I didn't realize you were that fortified there.
Yeah.
That's good, that's good.
Which is a lot of litigation in house, that was part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, all the contract negotiations.
It's good, that's good to know. Councilman Wilson kind of alluded to this in some degree as far as like city steps go, you know? Now, when I see the lawsuits that come our way and, you know, it's settle, 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 I understand very well how, you know, if we have to pay the other attorney's fees and, you know, eventually what we do, you know, settling is very typically the easy way out in less expensive way. And it makes sense in most cases. However, I do feel like, you know, there are bad people out there who are looking to sue the city of Pittsburgh just because there's a crack in the, they trip over something, you know? I don't know if they're even reviewed, to be honest with you, you know, if they're intensely reviewed and like, you know, does this person have something? Or is it, you know, they hired an attorney, we don't want to, we don't want to risk paying their attorney too and we're going to cut bait, basically, and get out. So I just didn't know what your thoughts were on, you know, kind of dwelling into those a little more and make sure. Go ahead, Madam President, do you have something? Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I, well, let me say, John Dougherty, who's in charge of our state litigation and Mike Kennedy, who is in charge of our federal litigation, they both do an extremely thorough job.
Do they? Okay, yeah, yeah.
With John Dougherty, we are definitely looking in the state court system about whether, you know, what type of injuries the plaintiff has and, you know, what what the consequences are. We we take a hard look at that. On the federal side, too, sometimes there's a risk of us paying the other side's attorneys. So that can also takes into consideration. So I will tell you, we do somewhat of a risk benefit analysis on what that is. But we are not afraid to go to trial.
I've been in that situation myself a few times. And let me tell you, by principle, I want to be like, I have the proof, I show my attorney, it's done. And it's like, well, it might cost you, you know, a good bit more. And, you know, I mean, it's just the nature of the beast, I guess, to say.
Councilman Coghill, I am an aggressive litigator by nature. So we, if we can take it to trial, we would take it to trial.
Good deal, good deal, good deal, good deal. We're always looking at the dollars and cents, though, and, you know, we have to take that in consideration. It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate. I, I don't like the idea that you have to pay the other attorney's fees. I really don't. I think, you know, if you're going to hire an attorney, then, you know, and you lose, then we're not, anyway. I see you went to William &amp; Mary. I love their campus. I've been down there many times. I golf there and I golf on the course at the, so it's a very, very, very beautiful place. So now you'll have my full support, Trisha.
Thank you.
Right, Trisha?
That's exactly it. Thank you so much.
No, thank you for being here. And now I'll turn it back over to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill, stepping in here for Councilwoman Smith. So I'll ask my questions while I'm here cheering until Councilwoman Smith gets back. Welcome. It's good to see you. I'm so grateful for your willingness to serve the city. I want to make sure that we all say that because it's, it is a labor of devotion and public service. It has the word service in it. We are in service to our citizens. And I'm, again, many of the questions, really good questions, were asked by other council members. So I'm gonna, I think, mention a topic that we haven't touched on before that is just really important to me and often relies on the city law department to uphold and defend, which is my ardent defense of the public ownership of our water system. And I want to bring that up because you were probably at Duquesne Light while we were doing those fights. And Duquesne Light expressed its desire to purchase our water system. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to privatization. I'm vehemently against privatization of city assets, of city operations. Councilwoman Strasburger chaired a post-agenda of some, I don't know how many years, no, four years, maybe, at this table on privatization and its meanings. And we had some really good speakers from California, Donald Cohen of a, of a think tank called In the Public Trust. And he educated us that there are many levels to privatization. And he had them in a rank order as design, build, finance, operate, maintain. When you get into the leasing of city assets under another's operations, you have really basically crossed over the threshold of privatization, even if you still have the lease or you still own the deed on, for example, the water system. So even starting under the Ravenstall administration, the leasing out basically of PWSA to Viola's Control, where their direct employees were the entire top of the organizational chart, the five at the top, was, was, you know, privatization, but even though we didn't call it that at the time. And so I just wanted to see if you would fight to support and defend our rights to public ownership against corporate privatization interests.
Let me say, I, I do not have a strong feeling one way or the other, quite frankly. So I will definitely take the direction of our clients, which is the city, the mayor and the council on what they want to do. This is what I will say about this. I know a lot of the very good people who work at PWSA. And I think they have done an excellent job of trying to work on the issues that they've had with the lead in pipes. And I also know that under the oversight of the Public Utility Commission, I think they have grown leaps and bounds in their ability to manage their public, the, you know, the utility, the water system that they have. And that's the important part, right? The important part is making sure that we have safe drinking water for our residents.
Important part is that we also continue to own the system.
Again, I have no opinion on that. I will do the legal work of my clients.
He has plenty of opinions for you.
I do. Lots of opinions to share. I do.
But I do want to, I mean, I, I just want to say that I think PWSA is doing an excellent job right now of, of their work. And, and although they still have things to do, the fact is they're beating their timelines and they are working really hard. And so I, I think the city of Pittsburgh, I know mine itself, I had high lead levels in my water. And then the last couple of tests I've had, those numbers have dropped to a much lower level, much safer drinking level. So I just want to say, like, I know a lot of work has gone into that and I'm proud of those employees.
Thank you for testing your water. And we still do offer free water testing and people can call PWSA. I'm sure Councilwoman Strasburger can give us the information. But it's, I think, also important that your resume includes that experience with the, the federal and state regulatory environment. So while other members asked about your specifically municipal law experience, we only exist in this framework that is granted to us by the state and by the federal government. And so that's part, I think, of our job is to understand our jurisdiction, where it ends, but also what we can do within that jurisdiction. Because we don't do all the things we can do. And I think maybe you're alluding to some of that on the housing and affordability and vacant properties, right?
Right.
So really, really having a fulsome understanding, fulsome is Councilman process word that I like to steal because he uses it a lot. There are really robust understanding of what we can do within our jurisdiction because there are more things we can do and we have not been doing them, partly because of austerity, partly because of other choices that we've made. So I'm really happy to see that you have that framework because I think that, for me, that's the most important part. And your resume clearly shows that you've managed large teams and large numbers of cases at a time. So I'm really happy to see that. I'm happy to support your nomination. And I, I just want to say, you know, so in the same vein of the state regulatory environment, the PUC and this, this experience that you have at an electric utility, we've, you know, it's all on our minds, what's in the infrastructure bill at the federal government. We were speaking about it a little bit today at council. I think all of us are reading those new rulings out, on the final rulings on what is allowed to be expended. And do, you can speak a little bit to any of the experience you have in that arena?
Yeah, we tracked the federal infrastructure legislation very closely in my last position. So from the beginning all the way through, we're very aware of the implications that that has. I mean, specifically for cities, right? There are going to be large buckets of money out there that really need to be taken advantage of, that there's grant funding that's available. I'm very grateful for President Biden, who, who, you know, when he came here, expressed his assistance for us and specifically about the Fern Hollow Bridge. But I think he was, he, he spoke more broadly about all of our infrastructure, especially our bridges. And I really hope that we can take full advantage of that. And the law department is happy to help in whatever way we can on evaluating it. It is, these bills are set up mostly for public entities, right? We, and so it is the public entities that need to take advantage. It's a difficult process, right? A federal grant process is not an easy thing to do. So I know there's a lot of work to be had, but whatever we can do to assist, we're happy to.
Plenty of experience in the city at large, and not just in city government, but in the, in the residents in the city and successfully applying for federal funding. So I think we're well situated that way. And it's going to be this table's job, I think, to make those clear priorities of what, what we're, as a, as a city, need the most. So that, looking forward to working with you on those issues. It's very exciting.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a few questions left. But I don't know if anyone asked this when I was out of the room or during the course of this meeting, but you mentioned the agenda that you're here, that you are good to represent an agenda-driven department. So I know that Mayor Ganey ran a lot on the UPMC lawsuit and that sort of stuff. Pardon me? No one asked. Do you have any opinions or comments in that regard?
So when I think about what we're working towards for the mayor's agenda, we're certainly going to deal with the affordable housing thing. We want to deal with making sure that there's equity in our procurement process and to make sure that we're working towards that everyone, all the residents of Pittsburgh, no matter what, feel safe and provided for in their homes. I don't know if we've come to a decision, quite frankly, next on, on how, what I will say is, I think there could be an examination of nonprofit property taxes and whether or not they should be paying property tax, nonprofits should be paying property taxes or not. But that issue has not been decided at this point.
I'm curious as to, you know, what nonprofits would be coming after, or at least working with. So I'd love to have that conversation. I think that's a conversation for us all to have together because when you talk about differing opinions and agendas, there may be some there, you know, with some of that.
Yeah, and I apologize. I meant mission-driven in the fact that, that my department feels that they're like working towards something that's exciting. Not necessarily.
Okay. And so, and I know that some people mentioned the lack of municipal law background. Do you plan on filling some of the vacant positions with somebody with that?
Oh, that's a very good point. The, one of the vacant positions is an associate solicitor. So that is the head of the municipal practice group, and that's the position. So before Yvonne Hilton, our former solicitor, she used to be the associate solicitor. She kept that position open because she served both positions while she was solicitor. So she was both solicitor and associate solicitor of the municipal practice group. So that group is open. And it's a very good point. I should have brought it up earlier. Council President, is that we will be having an experienced lawyer who comes in, in that associate lawyer position. It may be somebody from the group, quite frankly, because we will be open to both internal and external applications. But that position will be filled with someone with experience on the municipal law.
Okay. And I, I thank you for that. And that, to me, that's important because I think that fills the void of anything that anybody might think there may be. Although I think you bring a wealth of experience. Every, as soon as I heard your name, I was so excited, to be honest with you. So I think, and I think most people felt that way. But I also want to talk a little bit about with your relationship, the law department's relationship. First of all, I love our law department. I think they work extremely hard. And they are challenged with trying to keep an administration happy, trying to keep nine members of council happy, trying to deal with all the employment issues in the city and the lawsuits in the city. And I just think they do an amazing job. And they're certainly not here for the pay. I mean, they could probably go a lot of places and make a lot more money. So I'm thankful for them and for their service. But for that, now that we have a city council solicitor, which we hadn't had, and Councilwoman Coghill talked a little bit about the relationship. But he is drafting some rules of engagement, so to speak, for us. But I, I said to him, it is always my desire that council members go to our law department first. And when we have a conflict or there's an issue, then that's when we bring him in. And if there are things that we need to work with as a body, then that's what he works with us on. So I think we're trying to draft that. So I'd love for you to be able to talk with him. I want to make sure our law department's also responsive to our clerk. When she sends an email, she's speaking for us. And so I think that she's waiting for some responses on several things right now. But I, to me, I want them to understand she still works for us. They still work for us. And, you know, it takes one mayor to hire people. It also takes five members of council to undo that. So I want to make sure people understand we have, you know, we still have some say here, even though, you know, we respect the mayor and want to, want to give him the administration and the people that he wants to support at the table. I think that he, so far, he's, he's by a lot of, you know, really good people on board. But I want to make sure that's clear. And then when we talk about the vacant houses, one of the things I'd love to see is for us to work with our police department on getting some of those free houses for new recruits. But they have to stay in the city for so many years with a free house. That way it brings them back into the city as an incentive. And it also gets property, you know, somebody back in the neighborhood and some vitality back to a community. Some, I don't know if we could do that with other departments, but I know right now they have a residency and that's an issue for our residents that do live in the city. So it might be some way to, some way to balance that, like, to bring them back into the city. I don't know. The other thing I, I want to mention is, I heard you talk about the the tenants and helping with people with evictions and housing and affordable housing and all that. One of the things we are not talking a lot about is landlords that are affected by not having payments. And we have a lot of them that are contacting our offices or we're hearing or seeing them on, you know, social media. Some of them buy a home, like a duplex, to live in one half. So when the tenant's not paying, they lose their home too. So I, I want to know what, you know, if anything, during your conversations, if you, if you haven't brought that up already, if you at least bring that up, that we have to, it has to be dual purpose. We have to be, because if we chase all the landlords out of the city of Pittsburgh, we're chasing affordable housing out of the city of Pittsburgh. I mean, we have to make sure that we understand that there are people that rent, that can't afford to buy, may never, may not ever want to buy. And if we chase the people out that are renting to them because we're making things too costly because we're not giving them the money and making it not profitable for them in some fashion, that we're also having a negative effect on the affordability.
I think that's a really good point. And I certainly would encourage landlords to reach out to Action Housing with the E-RA program because right now there's that federal dollars that are available and we should be taking full advantage of it.
Yeah. So I think maybe when we do some of the things with housing, we always make sure there's some component that we're making sure we're helping landlords stay affordable landlords, at least in the city.
And I think, Council President, you bring up, you know, I think, kind of mom and pop, right? Landlords tend to have more affordable housing than like the large apartment complexes, which are certainly higher than market price, right? So I think that's a really important point.
And last utilities, how do you see if we have an issue with Duquesne Light or some other utility that maybe you may have a relationship with, how do you see representing us if there's? I'm hoping you have a good relationship and you can settle it.
At least with Duquesne Light, right?
Yeah, right, right.
Well, I'll be careful not to, I mean, I'll be careful not to serve in any conflicted capacity. So I certainly, if something, conflict comes up, I'll have somebody else handle it. But I do, I will tell you, I think I have a lot of experience in the area that I think could be helpful in resolving issues.
Okay. And maybe you can help us with Duquesne Light whacking trees down all over the city. Okay. But we do appreciate you and them and, and all these, these questions. I appreciate you taking the time to answer them so thoughtfully. And I'm looking forward to your confirmation.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions for members?
I just have a quick comment, Madam Chair, which Madam am I speaking?
Her. I'm leaving.
You know, when you talk about holding, retaining the young, you know, or old, whatever, new, I should say.
Right, new.
Attorneys that come about. First and foremost, they get experience here, you know? And it reminds me a little bit of our police situation where we have officers that go through our training and they know, once they get five years in here, they can pretty much go to any suburb and probably earn twice as much. Kind of the same thing, you know, on a smaller scale with you. We are losing officers at an alarming rate when it comes to that. So I just wanted to add that. I think you're always going to have that problem because, you know, unless they're so passionate about being part and helping the city, which is great, but I think it's the experience that drives them here. And, you know, you probably are able to retain them for four or five years and then some law firm comes knocking and they're like, see you later. Okay.
Thank you.
Kubiak, any other final comments?
No, thank you so much for your time and I appreciate your support.
All right. Thank you. I'm just going to call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.